Right, then in that case, for said, I'm going to call the meeting of the South Borough Zoning Board of Appeals to order. For June twenty eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Laura, you'll correct me if this is wrong, but pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen. Measures adopted through the state of emergency, signed into law on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, this meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. That's the right one, right? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, so the first item on our agenda this evening is a special permit. For two sixty-four Corvillo Road, P and H Management Corporation. And Laura, do we have somebody for the applicant to present?
Yes. So I see John McCullough, the applicant's lawyer is here. John, I'm going to move you over and then I'll read the public hearing notice for you. Okay, the Board of Appeals of the Town of South Borough will hold a public hearing via virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. With regard to the petition of P and H Management Corporation, two sixty-four Corvillo Road, South Borough, Mass, map nine, law eleven. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow an alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming use for an increase in vehicles for sale. The property is located in the residential B district. Relief is requested under chapter one seventy-four, article five, section one seventy-four dash nineteen. And one seventy-four dash nine.
Okay, uh, Mr. McCullough. You are muted.
Yep, sorry. Uh, good evening, um, I'm, I'm sure the board is familiar with this site. And uh, last, last time I was before uh, the board, um, and I believe it was the. Select, I don't know, is this the same or is the zoning board, is it, is there a difference? Because we, we, we are, um, we came before the board, um, in two thousand fifteen. Uh, there was an issue, we decided to, the tanks were going to be removed. I uh, was working with prior town council. And we came up with a uh, a plan to improve the site and uh, limit. Limit the use a little bit with not gas station and you know, keep it at a, at a uh, light level repair. But what we wanted to do is focus on selling the cars, which is less in and out of people, less, less parts spread around on the, on the site. And when we submitted the site plan, which I had attached to our um, to our application. And we went through and, and um. Had all the outlines of where cars would be parked, what cars would be for, the limitations on the number of automobiles to sell. And in, as part of that, also, it, it didn't limit the repair because it's a necessary part of prepping a car for sale. But as to offer for sale or put uh, automobiles uh, with a sign for sale, it was, the limitation was eight. At that point in two thousand fifteen, that was approved after, I think it was two public hearings. There was a, had been a pending court case that was dismissed and uh, you know, we stopped selling gas. And we focused on that about two or three years after that, the, the operator passed away. Um, site was vacant for like nine months and then we had another fellow come in. Um, who, who tried, but he didn't really have a partner, didn't quite get it together, operated for a year, year and a half. Um, but wasn't keeping the place orderly or that clean, we thought. And um, he couldn't make it and we found the present operator now, R, R Z N D Motors. And they're really, you know, minds been doing a good job. We think they've kept the site very clean. They have followed all the rules. I've, I've gone down and reviewed it with them. They have, they have um. But they're busier, they're a little busier, but they limit to the eight cars to sell. And there's a process in selling those cars. Once you're sold, it takes one to three days to plate them. They move them to the other side. If you look at the site plan, I don't know if it's readily available for anybody, but it's like a triangle lot. And on the wider part of the triangle and the back fence, um, that's where the cars that are sold are. And then there's a area where the building is and the repairs are done. Um, but the light repairs, maybe changing brakes, changing oil fluid, but no transmissions, no engine work that was done before. No body work at all. It's, that's all sourced out to limit the traffic at the site. It seems, uh, I, I wasn't in, involved, but at some point, I think in late two thousand twenty-two, there was an application. By our tenant, R Z N D Motors, and I, I believe uh, her name is Lara and she's on, she may be on. In the waiting room, uh, if there was any questions on the operation. But she, she came in to renew the permit for eight, eight automobiles for sale. Um, you know, following the same rules, not asking for anything more than what, what we had relied on in the two thousand fifteen grant and permit. And um, it was denied. I, I wasn't there, so I can't really speak to it, but I, I did get a notice. From um, the town, uh, I think it's Mr. Purple saying that there was an issue with the actual zoning. And that even though we had a special permit, even though there was a grant and even though he relied on it. It wasn't, didn't go through zoning and there hadn't been any issue on the zoning um, uh, request since. Uh, I don't, I, I think it might have been back in the eighties. But um, since two thousand fifteen, and what we thought was a settlement of the issue at that site. What we thought would um, you know, keep, keep the neighbors happy, what was in accord with. Doing a little less traffic in a very heavily trafficked zone, but less impact on the neighbors and gas coming in and out. Heavy repairs, a lot of people coming back and forth was a, a very focused and limited uh, operation. That, that had rules attached to it and that this um, this client would follow. So that we uh, it was, I was told that the way to do this was to make an application for the. For the use to the zoning and try to iron this out. I, I do know that there is new town council. I haven't spoken with the new town council. I did work with um, Mr. Cipriani. A lot in the past to try to come to this resolution earlier and um. And you know, I'm hoping that the board tonight can take this uh, review what we've submitted. And allow the operations to continue as they are, really, um. I, I think there is a benefit to that neighborhood because there's no real area to service. I mean, they could still service cars in the local area. It's close to a commuter rail. Some people do drop off. A car for an oil change, um, in the, the car sales, you know, it's a convenience. It's something that's been. There since nineteen eighty, but when you lose the gas and you lose the heavy repair. You really can't make it on, on selling just two cars on a limitation. And that was really the argument and that was what we laid out in front of the town. And when we had a plan drawn up, there was conditions to put a new fence up to landscape and you know, to keep it orderly. And watch the traffic flow. And I believe now, because that's one issue, that there's a cut through from Woodland Road to cut and turn off that triangle uh, through the lot. And they put up pylons now and stop that, um, because I think for public safety issues, it, it made a lot of sense. So um, I mean, I, I could go on in some, in some of the details. I, I don't think there's any greater detriment to the neighborhood. This has been actually less impact than it was uh, ten years ago. And where this present operator now has just done a fabulous job. They have uh, standard hours. They told me they close at six, thereabouts. They have families to go home to. They don't work late into the night. I know one of the other operators used to work till nine or ten at night, you know, to get a job done. But that's, that's really not happening uh, in this, in this uh, location. So they, they just want to run their business. They want to run it according to the rules and they, they want to be a, you know, good, good citizen in the town and be useful. I know that the, the, the issue that you um, have looked at is sometimes, is there an increased detriment? And you know, we'd argue that they would not, the station has been at that location. My clients owned it since eighty-three or five. And before that, it was at least twenty or twenty-five years by a prior owner. So it, it's been used as a location for automobile service in some form or another. Since at, at least the nineteen sixties, maybe the nineteen fifties. The um, what we like to do is keep a successful husband and wife operation. Uh, I do know that the uh, town building inspector did come down because there were some complaints and um. That there was twelve vehicles for sale on site. Now, there might be twelve vehicles for sale, but I mean, not for twelve vehicles on site. But not for sale. They're very specific. When there is a car for sale, it has a sign, it's tagged. It's, it's in the window, it's clear. When, when there is a sale, they take the automobile. They put a bill of sale on the dash and they move it to the other side of the lot, the narrow side. And um, there's been an occasion where they uh, had sold, I think, one weekend, two or three cars. And they don't want to pack the lot. That was the issue. They, they sight unsightly. And a neighbor that they know said, well, if you're getting those plated and entitled, you can park them in my driveway over the weekend. And, and that was raised, you know, there's no storage on another site. Um, they, they're aware of what the uh, the building inspector raised. And um, I think if you go that down there at any one time, you'll only see for sale signs of eight vehicles. Um, there is, of course, you sell a vehicle, you have to, you know, prep it, get it ready for plated and there's a few days uh. On that and financing, but they take it away from the sales side. It's, it's part of the um, the process of doing that business. That's um, in a nutshell, where uh, where, where, we're at and what we're requesting is um. Really nothing more than what's been in place since two thousand fifteen. And to formally have that acknowledged and, and keep operating under the rules. Thank you.
Just, just a couple of things to begin with. I'm sorry, when, when did our, our Z N D become the, the manager? Or that, that, when did they start operating that, that site?
I, um, Larazon's, I, I think the lease started at the beginning of twenty. Twenty-one or maybe twenty twenty-two. I, I, I can get that information, but it's been um. It's, it's been less than two full years.
Okay, okay. Um, so I did, I, I did want to, before we get into any questions from the, the board. I didn't want to address everybody because I did have the opportunity to speak with, with Jay Talman. And I'm sure if I say something that's not quite correct here, Liz can feel free to jump in and correct me. But e- essentially Jay said, which others I think have opined on, is that the select board really didn't have the right. To grant that um, that license to, to say you can sell eight cars. That it really does have to go through the zoning board appeals. Uh, so Mr. Talman uh, told me that, you know, the Z B A has pretty wide options here. That essentially, they'd never been approved for greater than two. So what we have for us is we can, we can look at anywhere from two to fourteen and anywhere in between. In terms of, um, you know, what we think is appropriate for the site. Um, I, I think we do want to be a bit cautious about prior enforcement actions. Um, but there's, there's definitely a long history here. Uh, in, in fairness to R Z N D, I would think we want to maybe only look at what's happened and ha- what has happened on that site. The last couple of years. So. Just to clarify things, it, my understanding is you really, they're not really. They're not really approved to opt to, to sell more than two cars there yet because the Z B A did not grant that special permit. Sorry, I thought you were going to say something, Mr. McCullough?
Oh, no, I said it was January of two thousand twenty-one that R Z N D went in there.
Okay, okay.
I just confirmed. And um, wa- was that a, a question that you had for me?
I just, I was just looking for clarity. You, you, you did say R Z N D is relatively new to the property. Like I said, I mean, you're, you're correct. I, I look at the very thorough uh, package that Laura Davis provided for us. It does go back to nineteen eighty, uh, eighty-two, eighty-five, eighty-seven. I mean, it's, there's, there's a lot of history here. So.
No doubt.
But um, you know, I, as the, as a board, that now we want to be able to. You, you know, maybe challenge some of the, the assertions you're making here. So I'll just give our, our, our members the opportunity to uh, to weigh in. Paul, do you have audio? Can you, do you want to ask some questions?
I hope I have audio. How am I doing?
Excellent, excellent.
I, I, you know, I, I actually don't have any questions. I, uh, there was a lot of information that was sent out and I got to be honest with you, I wasn't fully following exactly what uh. What was being requested or why it was being requested. But having uh, just listened to the fifteen minutes of it, I, I, I understand now.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I, I come back in.
Okay.
Doris, Doris, yeah.
I have feedback.
I think it's.
Okay, is that stopped?
Yeah, it's better.
David, I, I appreciate that, the clarity on what we're voting on tonight is um, this large latitude. We've only ever approved two cars. Um, you know, Laura, I had asked, um, just so I, it was so much material and I actually did read through most of it. I'd asked you to put together one of two charts and I just have one general question and then we can move from me quickly. There's a, on that Excel sheet, there's the uh, little grid sheet of the history that you put together. Of the denials, the approvals, and then the select boards. Could, can you share a screen or put that just up for net?
Yes.
Now a second.
Give me one second while I pull that up.
I found it to be a lot of material. To read through.
It, it is a lot of material. I.
Yeah.
I tried to sit down and write some notes one night just to try to follow it. Like I said, very briefly, you could see. When it was applied for, uh, it was initially denied. It was a.
Right, yeah. Want to focus on one section of the worksheet when she's able to get through all that.
Okay.
Um, so I'm preface to that to keep it moving along. There's a section in there and I, and um, in that grid sheet if. Okay.
Okay.
So in starting in two thousand fifteen, which is along with the settlement, I, I read some of the settlement papers. Where, wha- what, if somebody could shed light on this, in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty and twenty-two. We've gone one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight years, eight years with the select board approving this. And now it's a problem. It's, that's a, that's a lot of years. Anybody got a comment?
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like a lot of years to be okay.
I, I, well, I think, it, it, and, and maybe I can be corrected here. I, I think the select board can renew the license, but I think the issue is. They were never approved for the sale of six. Now, why exactly the select board did that? I, I would have a hard time explaining. I don't.
Yeah, I said, but in the license, it says eight cars, so it's, it, unless that license printout was different in each of the, so eight years. In the licenses we see today, it's got eight cars. So for eight years, that's just trying to, eight years. Possibly each of those eight years, that license said eight cars.
Right, agree.
Okay, that's what I think. Okay, just raising it. Um, any comment on that? Further comment from the attorney?
I have a different question, but it relates to the same thing. But I don't know.
Comments from us or comments from the?
No, uh, I, I'll just dive in.
I was asking Doris.
Yeah.
Do I have other comments? Um, I, I don't believe I have other comments.
Oh.
Uh, the attorney was pretty thorough. I've read through the documents. Um, this isn't exi- uh, you know, I could, the general, it's an existing use. That's possibly, he says nineteen sixties, other documents say nineteen forties. Uh, that has serviced and been trimmed in service, according to this grid sheet. Um, uh, over many, many years. Um, and I, so it's been allowed to be some type of service center, not the marine center, I think, any law can't pay for marines. And then the gas tanks got pulled out and then we have, I look at it a bridge, we have eight years. Of what I believe that business would think possibly that those are approvals. Even though we're getting, you know, getting the proper advice now, it sounds like. That's my question is how, you know, how did that happen?
Uh, and, and I mean, I think the, the reality of that, uh, Doris, is that the, the select board was pretty different back in, what was that? That was. Twenty fifteen, um, I, 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 I'm not sure if there was.
Yeah, no, no.
At the time, I, I, that, that, there, there was a little bit of a, an end around. I, I really don't know because there's, you know, it's approved and the, and the planning board has a minor site plan review. I, I don't have any more insight into why.
No, I don't have insight. It's just, it's for me, um, I mean, that seems, and I want to hear everything, and it seems. Um, i- if you were in the business person's shoes. Uh, I mean, they're not on the select board. They're running a business. But maybe Mike, Mike, what are your thoughts? I don't need to belabor it. I have my thoughts on it, unless you want me to explain myself further.
Mike, you want to?
Yeah, so, and this is, uh, this is a question uh, I have. I'm looking at the. Um, of course, had it a second ago. Uh, I am looking at the March twenty-eight letter, the R Z N D Motors letter from uh, Mark Purple. And in this letter, um, he refers to it been ter- determined failing decision. Uh, regarding selling used vehicles. Um, and not the twenty fifteen minor site plan that increased the vehicles to eight. You were notified at the time you needed to submit an application for a special permit for non-conforming use of the zoning board of appeals. We understand that this was being done. As of today, no application has been filed. So this was when they got their minor site plan in two thousand fifteen. That, but where is this notification? So when I pull up the site plan approval, uh, and the site plan itself, I don't see a condition anywhere. Listed in writing that says they need a special permit to increase a lot. So I don't know if I am missing that or if they were told that, but there's no documentation of that statement. That's what I wanted.
I'm, I, if I, if I may, um, I, I was there and I went to all the hearings and, and. Walked through the process step by step with town council. And that was our understanding that this was the approval, that there was never any conditions. And afterwards, when we wrapped up, um, and got the dismissals and put everything together, is there anything else? There wasn't. There was nothing that we were told of. A- and I don't know if, if Mr. Purple's letter. Says that you were notified at the time that you needed to submit an application for a special permit for non-conforming use. Whether he's referring to R Z N D and they had a discussion, because it didn't happen. That I looked through my, my letters, my files, everything that I had, and I could not find anything. I was, I even wanted to call Aldo, but you know, I didn't want to weave him into this thing and but um. I don't have anything, because I, if we were told to go to zoning, I would have gone to zoning. I've been appearing before the South Borough uh, town. Uh, I think it was one of my first clients back in the early nineties, probably nineteen ninety-four or so. Um, there was an uh, uh, one issue. Um, but the goal here with Aldo, and, and I can say that, and the goal of the town was to kind of reduce the impact. And, and make it something that was, you know, not as loud, not as much stuff, just very, very like kind of light. Impact and manageable with the number of cars. Yep, um, but i- if honestly, if we were told to go get zoning, we would file the application.
But I just clarify something through the chair. The agreement for judgment issued on December third, two thousand fifteen. Um, it does say as condition three, in the event defendants or any. One more of them elects to conduct such motor vessel, boat or marine repair. They will first obtain an appropriate zoning relief.
Yeah.
But then further on condition five, it does say. Um, defendants agree to continue to conform and comply with all state and local regulatory laws. Bylaws and rules and regulations as to the conduct of any and all business at the site.
Right, I agree. That, that, that number three dealt with, there was an application at the time that we wanted to fix. Uh, boats, marine boats and have them on the site, and that was a big objection. And we agreed that we'd go back later if we wanted um, to do that or if that was an option and, and that just option went away. And um, as far as the number five, the catch-all that, you know, of course, we want to follow all the rules. We wanted to make sure. But there was no, which usually there's some kind of conditions attached to any special permit. A- as far as all the stuff, I've been involved in various cities and towns and, and it, and if, if it had been made clear, it, it would have been done. And now that it's been made clear, he- here we are, um, i- not asking for anything more additional at this point. From what, what the last seven or so years that we've operated. And we actually have found a, a very good tenant. They're, they've been excellent. They, they keep it clean. They, they're very aware. Um, and they just, they want to, you know, follow the rules and, and do what the town needs and keep it nice. They, they do.
So, so if I may, I, I, I would view this, this is not so much as does it, should this business be allowed to continue? I mean, I, I think it's fair to say it's been, there's been something there since nineteen forty-ish. Um, it's really more about number of cars for sale. So.
Yeah.
I, I do think we should focus on that. Craig, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I mean, I think my, my main sense is that. You know, the select board acted, you know, maybe outside their bounds. But acted in what they thought was in the best interest of the town. They eliminated gas tanks and underground storage of gas and eliminated a high volume in and out traffic thing at that site. In exchange for, again, outside of their bounds, upping the number of cars. But it's been operating at that level for, as Doris said, eight years. So, you know, in a sense, my view is that, well, maybe the inappropriate board to grant it. You know, it's a little hard to put that horse back in the barn. It's been operating at this level for eight years. You know, it's almost like a constructive easement. You've been taking care of it and you've been doing it for this long. It kind of is what it is at this point. So, you know, I'm more interested in what it means to go from eight to fourteen cars. If that's still what the applicant is asking for, it sounds from the attorney that maybe they're not asking for that. They're just trying to get their stakeholder at eight and be happy with it. But, you know, I think it's hard to say after operating in this fashion for eight years. That they shouldn't operate in the same fashion. That doesn't mean that I don't have issues with the fact that their site plan calls for landscaping. That's never actually been done. If there's something else that should be done in terms of fencing to shield the site from the. The butters on Woodland Road, you know, there's other things that I think we should be thinking about.
Hundred percent.
Honestly, I think the eight car issues, you know, it's gone. Uh, they've been operating this long. It's, it's hard to draw that back. The tenant came on thinking they had the ability to sell eight cars. So if you take that back down to two, the tenant is probably gone, which means you have a vacant site, no business, no business taxes, nothing.
And may interject, Miss Jamie had a comment.
I do have, I have a few. Um, I'm also curious about how many cars they want on site. Because I also thought they were trying to up it to fourteen and everything I'm hearing from the council is, he keeps saying, we just want to keep it at eight. And, and do what we want to do. So I would like a, some clarity on that. Um, also just a few comments that I did drive by the site and I do think it looks a lot better um, than it used to. I think in that sense, they've done a nice job, but when I drove by, there were definitely more than eight cars on that site. I think I counted eleven or twelve. Um, and it sounds like maybe it's eight cars for sale and then once they're sold, they're moved over. And so you're allowed twelve or thirteen or have or may may be in the final sales process. Um, I don't know if there's a distinction there, um, but there were definitely more than eight cars that looked like they were for sale. To me, when I drove by on Sunday. So those were just a few of my notes. So counsel, I don't know, can, can you speak to if they're asking for just eight? Or if they're trying to up the number for sale?
Well, they, they've had the eight allowed and I know, running a business, they would like to increase. running a business, they would like to increase it. And but at this, you know, we're coming in here and and want to correct something that 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 bubbled up to the top that I think both the town and the and the applicant here were unaware of it. It's the first time I heard of it. I thought it was fine, but that doesn't mean we don't need to be here. You know, to run the business successfully, some towns have no limits. Some towns uh, do it as much, many parking spaces you have minus like three or four for in and out. I know that they have more spaces than eight. But I do know that they've, when they follow the rule, if you go and see, they will have eight cars will be for sale. They'll move the other ones. They've they've told me that they have a process because the last thing they want is a violation of someone coming in from the town saying, you you know what, I went down there and I counted eleven cars because they're very specific with sale signs and if they're sold, the bill of sale and moving off. And they they think that that's the way they have to protect their business. So if if the, you know, board would consider a site plan that delineated where uh, cars for sale uh, and you know, drilled down a little more than the site plan that we had was really a parking spaces, some landscape and some order to it. Because honestly, before there was, there was no order. And and um, now there, now there is, and now um, tenant here knows the rules, understands the rules and wants to, you know, protect and grow their business within the parameters that are given to them.
Sorry. So what, so what is the number then? Is there a number or are you, are you just subject to whatever we we agree to?
The petition asks for a minimum of eight and up to fourteen is delineated.
Okay. Um, I I just, I did want to just add something as well that uh, Casey, the the building commissioner actually was there just this week to inform uh, the tenant that they were exceeding the allowed number of cars on the lot. And and I think maybe Jamie Moore, to your point, if maybe we do need to be really clear on the language here, like I'm I'm hearing well, you can sell eight, but of course you have them transitioning in and out, and so there's going to be more. And maybe the language needs to be, you cannot, you can't have more than X number at any given time. Rather than say, well, these are for sale, but these other ones are somehow in a transition period. Maybe that may be something we we might want to, we 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 should consider.
David, um, I have a modestly good understanding of something consulate said regarding that business. And uh, it it could be in exactly that language. So you could be eight and go to twelve, or you could think twelve are being sold. And then we have two people who work there and three people in the bay and and a and a truck pulling up and a truck pulling out and and then it's got to get licensed. So maybe the solution, um, and not, you know, I'm not even confident. I did go by the site. I thought the site looked clean. Um, I'm with Greg. There needs to be maybe some revisions and all those safety concerns we want to address, but in in their minds, they're at eight. In uh, some of the documents minds, they're over. I I'm leaning towards what council's talking about is the business operates very, probably very much like he's describing. We've got eight for sale, but one just sold. So that doesn't mean we can't put a replacement car in. And uh, maybe from just not knowing, they put a car across the street.
So. Right, which which to be clear that the car across the street, that was something that Casey did specifically cite is you're not allowed to do that. So just to be clear.
They 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 understand that and we had a discussion, so that that's not going to happen.
The 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 other issue Greg had raised it is, um, this will be eleven thousand five hundred square feet of nothing if the business couldn't survive. Um, and then the other question I have is what, how many could you maximum store? Anybody's the answer. What could you really store safely on the lot? And uh, I'm not saying go to fourteen, I'm not saying go to twelve, but what is the number of cars that need to be on the lot? It it is their law.
Right.
That there's business and maybe that, I'm not saying yes, I'm gonna say, is that that could put it to bed is is getting a maximum because then you could never put the twentieth car in there. There's physically no space.
Right. That's the, and that, that's what I'm getting at is just the language right now is you can sell this many. But there's option, there's opportunity to put more on the lot. I I I mean, I'm sure there's going to be an opportunity for butters to speak here, but I would think that what would drive them crazy is the fact that there's too many there. So that might be something we want to consider is what.
No, we we just, uh, I'm seeing a huge thunderstorm here, so.
My light's on.
I think we lost Paul.
Or he got hit with like a freeze spray.
Yeah.
We might have lost David.
I'm going to step in here and um, maybe suggest that we take a five minute recess to see what happens with Dave and Paul based on the weather going around. Can I have a vote on a five minute recess?
Second that.
Uh, Jamie.
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mike.
Yes.
Doris.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Uh, Laura, let's take a five minute recess and see if uh, Paul and David can uh, rejoin us.
Okay.
Do we just, uh, I'm not, I haven't done.
Yeah, mute and stop your video. You'll hang out in this area for now.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead and mute and stop your video and then uh.
Thank you.
Let's say just seven forty-five, which is now four minutes, but whatever. At seven forty-five, we'll try and see who's back.
Okay, thank you, Greg. I'm gonna take a two second break here to get a glass of water.
Laura, do you want to try texting them?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's been. That looks like a good cookie.
David, that's Laura. Hi, um, I just wanted to let you know, we took.
Jamie's, Jamie moved screens on me. She's on the left now.
Oh, sorry.
Paul's, Paul's almost back. Can I ask an off topic tiny question? Yes, if Mike suggests, who, I don't know Liz.
Oh, I think she's here in place of town council.
Thank you. Okay, cause thank you very much. All right.
I wonder if if he lives on the side of town that always loses power.
You can get him by phone, probably.
Hey, guy, I just, uh, yeah, I just, I just lost uh, internet connection here in my house. Lightning just took it out.
Are you on your cell?
No, I'm on my cell, yeah.
Your connection's better anyways.
Yeah, it's much better.
Night and night and day better.
Yeah, Paul, from now, from now on, use your cell.
Yeah. Dramatically better. No echo, no choppy, no crackle.
It's, it's, and I have two computers too, like, and one is new. Yeah, and neither one, I don't, and I use Zoom for other things, but uh, oh, well, all right, well, cell phone from now on.
Sure you do, Paul. Sure you do.
Yeah, I've got a computer. I got a Texas instrument and a.
I got a Commodore sixty-four.
Damn, that's my age. Shoot. I I lost everyone there obviously for a second, but uh, uh, Dave, like your point, I know a little bit.
Paul, Paul, hold on just a second. We're in a recess until we officially reconvene. Yeah, we recessed when we lost you guys. So it's seven forty-five.
And uh, and and Paul McCauley, uh, no, I'm sorry, and John McCauley back there. Okay, we got Liz. Just need Mr. McCauley.
There he is.
All right. We got some thunder and lightning here. I was hoping it wouldn't go on.
And hopefully we didn't lose any of the uh, the audience. So, but it looks like everybody's been able to get back. So we'll assume that anyone in the audience who got frozen has also been able to come back. And uh, Laura, at this point, and Dave, uh, we're back on at seven forty-five, as we said, so let's reconvene.
Yeah, are we, are we all set now, Laura?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Okay, yes, let's, that's uh, let's uh, reconvene the uh, the CBA meeting for for this evening. Um, we were, Jamie, I think the floor was still basically yours discussing how many cars for sale. Um, you know, I I I do want to add in here just because I made the comment that Mr. Tellman said, hey, we're, we couldn't do anything between two and fourteen. That doesn't really predispose me to say we're gonna, we're gonna cut down the numbers, but I'm only, I'm relating what was, what was told to me. So so Jamie, back to you.
Um, yeah, I was just saying that um, that council had said that there would only be eight there, but we realized that some may be in transition. So we talked about that distinction. Um, and one other thing that I hadn't mentioned yet is that I know we had someone email in that at one point, I believe they said there were twenty-four cars on the lot. So even if you had sold eight and immediately moved them over and had another eight immediately there, you're still not at twenty-four. And even with you know, employees working there. So um, I I think it's something to consider that potentially those standards are not always being that.
Right, well, yes, we we certainly have plenty of uh, feedback from the butters in the, in the way of email that would suggest that. So that's something we have to consider. Yeah, Craig, was there something you wanted to add in?
Well, I, I mean, one point is that I think the the site plan itself calls for twenty-four parking spaces total. So I mean, in theory, at any given time, there can be twenty-four cars there legitimately. Um, and I I, the question I really wanted to say or ask to um, to the applicant's attorney is how many cars at any given time realistically and for how long are they in transition from for sale and sale completed?
If, if uh,
like if there's eight cars available for sale.
Right.
On average, and I get it's an average and you know,
Right.
varies, but how many gets sold? How long does it take? How many could legitimately be on site pending sale approved, waiting for plates, sale completed? And how long does that process generally take?
So, and and Laura Kariso is is on, I don't know if you can pass it, but my understanding is it's like twelve to fifteen. A sale can take one to three days to complete depending on the financing and how fast the RMB turns around a plate. Sometimes it's overnight, sometimes it's three days. You know, part of it is um, is keeping the site orderly. And with, and that's, that's really was, was, was the number one thing when I know when we were doing the lease is that you must keep this site orderly. It can't be all skewed and parked around and uh, in different areas. You got to stay within the lines, so to speak. The um, so I think on an average day, like twelve, twelve to fifteen. She told me that about three to five customers, depending on the day, could come in to look at cars. And there's a car, I know there's one to two employee cars. Um, you need, you do need space for that. And um, and then when they pull the cars off, if they're sold, hopefully, hopefully they are selling eight in a day and replacing eight right away. I mean, that would be ideal, but.
They would, they wouldn't need to go to fourteen if they were selling eight cars a day.
And that's true. Turning them over. I, it looks like it seems like a um, not the amount for sale, but the amount of cars on the spot.
Right, that's what I was getting at.
That's what I'm trying to get to and.
Is what the lot looks like.
Because, yeah, I've done.
Honestly, John, if 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 you think Laura can answer this more accurately, then maybe um, our Laura can bring her into the panel and allow her to answer if you'd like.
Well, yes, please. I think that would be good because she's there and it's good for her to talk to the board and also listen as well to what you have to say and have that dialogue. So if you could, please.
Okay, while we're bringing her there, and her end time, bring something else up too, is that I, it sounded like from the feedback we got, um, is that it's not always just the sale, it's the the big car transporter, right, that's coming to drop the cars on off, that's creating a hazard. So I think that's different than someone coming by to take a look at a car and just driving in. Um, so I I think there is a distinction there between cars for sale versus cars either for employees or customers.
Yeah. All right, um, sorry, I I'm not always good at this. Could you please just uh, rec- uh, identify yourself and your what you're, what you're bringing to the table tonight?
Sure, I'm Yada Kariso and I am the owner and this is Bruno Resende and he is my husband, also owner.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Great.
Craig, you had specific questions?
Yeah, so my my question to your attorney, but you, I know you were listening because you were in the, in the, in the audience was, you know, on average, how many cars do you have in that transition period between sold but not completed and off the lot? And how long does that process take generally?
So usually, um, you know, throughout a week, because it could be in a, in a week length. We're selling about, you know, two to five cars a week. Um, the process is, it it could be lengthy. Um, so we outsource financing. We don't buy here, pay here, so we do work with different banks. The bank process usually takes, you know, it can take one to three days. Then we have a mechanic revising um, the vehicles before we send them off to get, um, you know, sticker to get inspection. That also could take, you know, two, three days, depending on how long parts take to come in. Um, and then the final part would be sending them to get plated to RMB. As we know, they're short staffed, so that could take a couple of days as well. Um, so the whole process, it would take, you know, about a week or so, um, from start to finish.
Okay, and you're selling about two cars a week?
About, it would be like two to five cars a week. Um, if we're not going to work lucky, we're, you know, we're turning things over, you know, in a week.
Okay, so if you have five cars every week onsite that are in transition, assuming you're selling five cars a week and it takes about a week for each car to get through the transition process of your twenty-four spaces, five of them are basically taken up every day with cars in transition. Right?
Usually we move them to the corner. We have four spots.
I'm not worried about where you put them yet. I'm just talking numbers.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so of your twenty-four spaces, basically five are like they're transition cars.
Right.
If you had more cars, how many would you be selling a week? Would you still be at five a week?
If we would have, I mean, we would be able to, you know, overturn things a little bit quicker because we would have more um, inventory per se.
So you could sell seven in a week?
Right.
Okay, so so now of your twenty-four spaces, seven are taken up of cars in transition. Maybe eight. So you have, you have sixteen spaces left.
Right.
And you have employees and your service stuff, which takes up what, maybe six?
We actually don't have employees. It's me, my husband, and we have one helper.
So you have three, you have three people, because maybe your husband and you don't necessarily drive together, because someone's got to go run an errand or get a kid or whatever. You know, if you have kids, just assuming, sorry. Um, so there's, there's three spaces there and a couple spaces for um, employees and the handicap space. So you can't, so basically the, the far right hand side of your area is kind of off limits between employees, accessible parking space. accessible parking space and areas for service. So you're basically left with eighteen spaces on the, on the left-hand side of your site plan. And seven of those are taken up with cars in transition, which leaves eleven spaces. And that leaves no spaces for anybody to park if they're going to come and like visit you. Right?
Right. I do want to clarify that most of the time, and I say most of the time because the repairs that we do are minimum. We outsource what, you know, the mechanics, the body shops. So we don't have, you know, the, the, let's per se say, the five cars parked there all the time. If you drive by today, you will see two. If you drive by, you know, last week.
So you can't, you can't assign the, the handicap spot. So that's open, that's just out of the question. And you got a couple of cars for you and your husband and the, and the other person. So that's two to three. So that's you basically have two other spots out there. You have seven for cars in transition. You, you know, those two spaces that kind of can pass through is, is really your, your lane to get cars from one side to the other in a sense. So you know, it seems hard to imagine you being able to service on a sales side really more than ten cars on the lot. In my view of looking at the logistics of the lot, who's there, how many spaces you have for customers, cars in transition, et cetera. So I, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, based on you know, what you say your staffing is and everything else, I'm, I'm kind of coming to that conclusion that fourteen is probably totally out of the question based on the parameters of your lot. Um, but maybe eight, I think, as I said before, is out of the question or, you know, is out of the barn and kind of there, but I think, I think the board is really looking at a concept of eight to ten is, in my opinion, based on really the logistics of your lot. And we can, people can dispute that amongst the board, but that's, I'm just stating how I'm kind of reading the site plan. And, you know, the the factual nature of their business and their other business, even though they say they don't really do much on the oil change, they could and you know, customers and people coming in to view cars and et cetera.
I, I have a question too. How often, how often are, um, the car transporters, I, I, are they only coming to drop cars off to you? Is that typically while they're there? Do people you sell to typically drive off the lot if you're bringing them for a service? Like you said, you outsource a lot. Are you typically just driving it to, to that location? Um, that's what I'm curious about.
So the transporters have a set time where they can, you know, they have to give me a window when they're coming. When they are coming, they pull straight into the parking lot. They do not, you know, park in the street. We make sure that, you know, we move the cones. We let them know ahead of time that, you know, blocking traffic is not okay. Um, now, when we outsource mechanic or body shop, we do have two dealer plates and we drive the vehicles off, um, the lot ourselves.
So we, we have seen video where your car transporter was parked on Cordova Road and, and causing traffic issues, just so you know. And maybe that's an anomaly and that, that was the case, but just saying, you know, if, you know, if that is the case and something that you do or think is possible, then, you know, that is not a possibility. So again, you would have to make sure that the site is vacant enough between cars for sale, cars in transition, et cetera, to accommodate cars being dropped off and transports.
Absolutely. At the beginning of, you know, dropping off, they were doing that. Um, after we came across a few, not only issues for us, but for also traffic, we made sure that, um, there was, you know, where the entrance and the, kind of like the come, the run through, uh, where they can enter one way and exit the other.
David. Sorry, can I just make, I think, a really important clarification here? I want to make sure that the board is looking at the correct site plan. There are two site plans in the packet, the one that was submitted with the application, which is not the final approved minor site plan. The final approved minor site plan, I believe, only has nineteen parking spaces in total, not the twenty-four. So I'm happy to share that if you need to look at it, but I just wanted to make sure we're looking at the right plan.
Yeah, could you please share that, Laura?
Yes, absolutely. Give me one second. Okay, can you guys see that? Okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking at because I was looking to see if there's any stated conditions about going to ZBA for approval on minor site plan reviews. This is the one that I was always looking at.
Okay, I was looking at the one in the application. Um, needless to say, you still didn't abide by the landscaping in it.
Right.
Or the owner did not. Obviously, the, uh, the tenant is not responsible for the landscaping that the owner submitted. Um, so we still have ten across the back. We're down to five. Okay. And then along.
Then the handicap spot moved.
Yep, the handicap spot, which is cool, that's cool. That I like, I actually like that. Um.
Trying to get to nineteen.
Ten, five, three, and a handicap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Eight, eight, eighteen plus the handicap.
Yeah. But you have a nice full alley, long alleyway along Cordova Road for, you know, transport drop-offs. Yeah, make sure they come in from the Southville Road side, enter and exit, you know, north on Cordova.
Just so, just like we know with like Ken's food, no matter how many times you tell the truckers to, to not use the turnaround, that, that's not what they do, end up actually doing.
Yeah.
You know, we, we can say anything we want here and that trucker's gonna
True.
block traffic. But, but, but yeah, it's right. But I, I still think it is incumbent on us to. Oh, I don't disagree. I'm, I'm just stating, I just, like.
So, so back to my analogy then, you have three spots for staff. You have a handicap spot that's not really available. At eight cars for sale, you need five spaces for transition. I mean, honestly, you have like two, two spots for customers. And that seems to be what the site allows. Is the way I view the site plan. Because.
Greg, uh, you know, I saw your analogy, you know, with the, and where's our owners? Our owners are.
No, they're just lower in the.
They're just lower in the screen. Yeah, they're going screen.
Go scroll.
You know, let me, let me ask the question a different way. If we were looking at an increase in the number of spaces. Um, I thought Greg might have used a very aggressive uh, number of cars to sell in any one week. And then is, so let's just rehash that one second. So in a week, you really can sell up to five cars? Or are you really selling two cars? That's like turning your inventory over, you know, like fifty percent of your inventory over every week. That's, that sounds too, too good to be true. So are, are, you, you must, is that, is that true? You really can sell, or is it more like two cars a week? Because it has to, it's market spaces.
They, I think, they, the owners themselves said two to five.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm trying, yeah, and I, again, we're, we're talking maximum capacity here. So if they think they can sell two to five, then there is a possibility that there's going to be five cars in transition.
So you're suggesting look at it always to go to the maximum?
I think we have to.
Yeah, I think, because I think that's the biggest issues with the butters as well.
Mm-hmm.
It's what's our ceiling here? I think, I, I, I don't think anyone here disagrees that the basement is eight. Uh, you know, I, I haven't heard that argument. Basement is eight. But it's what the ceiling is.
So anytime, so we can go up to the five cars, I'm just going to ask it, uh, so you, you do actually sell five cars once in a while in any fifty-two week period? Laura.
Yeah.
You know, on a, on a good week, um, we could reach to that, to that level. Um, but we also have to keep in mind that if we do reach to that, we probably have one or two that are already plated and ready to go. So it could reach to five, but it never really does because by the time that we get to that number, one is one or two are already plated, you know, getting, um, inspection and written, already, you know, delivered.
Hey, that, let me, let me ask something, um, maybe it's a little off the cuff, but you, you, you know, if, if we believe that the issue is, is maximizing the number of cars on a lot, uh, you know, if we, we, if we grant a certain number and you're starting to push up against that with your cars in transition, do you have alternatives for moving two of the cars off to another site that, um, that where you have an agreement with, with, with the owner or is that not a possibility?
I have not, oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Mm-hmm. Thanks for your, I think we all got the gist of the approved site plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, the, the reason I ask that is I think, I think the concern is, and I think it's been said multiple times, is, is I, I don't care what status they're in, you cannot have more than nineteen cars, including the handicap spot on your site. And you, you know, we have to be careful of, about what we, what we approve, but my, my question is your flexibility. If you're aware that you can't exceed a certain number and you know that something's going to happen for a day or two, do you have options to say, well, hey, we can, these two aren't going to go anywhere for the next three days. We're just going to move them offsite somewhere. I I don't know. I mean, I know it's a question about your business, but the question is about your flexibility.
Absolutely. And, you know, to make it clear, um, I, I have heard before that, you know, somebody mentioned that there was twenty-four cars in, in, in one spot at, you know, at some point, um, which I can, you know, relatively say, um, it has not been true. Uh, the most I have in our parking lot was probably fifteen and those were parked vehicles in parked spots. Um, if it does get to that point, a lot of times we are taking cars home, um, to test drive them. Uh, to make sure that they're running well, that if we're putting new brakes, that they're functioning well, we, you know, so we usually take one or two cars home, um, you know, to, to do that transition as well. And because we do have dealer plates, we have that flexibility to move as we wish.
Right, understand. Okay, thank you. Uh, Jamie?
Yeah, I, I just have a question and I, maybe it's just more for the board to discuss, um, about how we want to lay this out, is that when we say cars in transition, well, what does that mean? Can anyone go up and say, oh, I want this car and I'm offering you six thousand. They say, great. And now we say, hey, that's car in transition, move another for sale shot, for sale sign on another car. I, I don't think we want to get into the weeds with that, but I think it's something we need to think about when we say, how many cars are we getting allowed for sale?
Yeah, I, my, I mean, my take on it is, is that we, we need to say this, this is the max allowed on the lot. Uh, we can say this is the ma, the, the, how many are allowed for sale at any given time. I agree with you. We don't want to get into the business shorts and say, these are the ones in transition. I, I think that's way too much um, detail, in my opinion.
If, if I may, I, I have done a, a, a hearing similar to this. Yeah, I, I forget which town, whether it was Natick or, it, it wasn't too far away, but it was the same thinking. They say, look, your lot can safely hold and is permitted for twenty. We, we're not going to tell you how many you can sell and not sell, but you can't have more than this, no matter what you're doing, or that will be a violation because they, the same thing, they didn't want to like, you have to have their inspector like looking and tagging cars and figuring out. Um, just, I, I think it's easier to enforce.
Yeah. No, I, 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 I appreciate that feedback. Thank you. Um, okay.
Uh, you know, the more I hear about determining which cars, which car, we have nineteen cars, you can't put more than nineteen. What is the great opposition? They're just sitting there. I understand the traffic issue. I understand the landscape. Um, I, I need to get a better handle on wha, what does it matter? If there's, so say there's nineteen cars there.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm kind of hearing that. I'm trying to hear that.
But I, I think that's the part where we open it up to the Yeah. audience and, and hear, and hear the neighbors and what.
Yeah.
What they're operating there.
Situation on the ground is.
And, and try to make sure they are discussing what is happening since
Right.
Yara and her husband have taken over the, the business, not
Right.
what happened ten years ago.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I was just about to say, I, I, we're probably at a point where, uh, if there are people, butters or anybody from the public that wants to join and, uh, and share, uh, their, uh, we should, this is probably the time to do that. I would, I would just, I guess I would ask in advance, um, I, I, just based on the volume that we got, uh, I'm welcoming all the, the, the inputs. I guess I would just ask that we not go over points previously made, that, you know, we, we get the facts about how it's been for the butters. Uh, we appreciate that, um, and, 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 and I guess keeping it sort of on point. Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, I was trying to think of another thing, but I totally lost it. Sorry.
I'm sure it'll come back, Greg. Uh, Laura, do you have somebody you want to bring in?
I do. I have two hands raised, um, and I just want to say that if there's anybody else in the attendees who wants to speak, just use the raise hand function. Um, so let's see, I have, first I have Ms. Engel Vaughn.
Hi, how are you? Laura Engel Vaughn, one ninety-eight Woodland Road. Uh, first, I wanted to thank everyone who worked to put that, uh, packet together for the meeting tonight. My husband and I just bought our house two years ago, so the historical context of all of this was very helpful to us. Um, I also think it's important to first start out by saying that, you know, my husband and I don't have any issues with there being a business at this location. We purchased our house knowing that there was a business there and historically has been one. So our concerns certainly base or aren't based upon a kind of not in your, our front yard approach. Um, what we do have an issue with is that the owners and the tenants can't seem to follow the rules and regulations that protect not only us as residents, but the town from, from problems arising, which I think, you know, we probably can all agree, that's where we are at right now. Um, I think these issues have been brought up in light of the many complaints that have been filed by residents regarding the violations that have happened over the last eighteen months here. Um, the current owner and specifically the current tenant have been in violation of their license since it was issued. Um, I personally wasn't in in attendance at the select board meeting when they were granted their license. I recently re-watched that meeting. Um, during the meeting, the applicant acknowledged the limitations of the site as well as their license, where the vehicles for sale were to be parked and stated that her and her husband's plan was to only keep five and at most eight cars there at any one given time. She also seemed quite sympathetic and understanding to the location being in a largely residential area and that they were in tune to the concerns that us as neighbors may have. Unfortunately, only days after they opened their doors, all of that appears to have gone right out the window. Um, what's actually most upsetting to me at this point is the way that this has been handled by the town up until the last week or two. Uh, back in March, I personally filed a complaint regarding this tenant as the violations of the site increased significantly throughout twenty twenty-two and the beginning parts of twenty twenty-three. In my complaint, I mentioned several issues, one being the haulers, the other being the number of vehicles that were parked on the lot that were a, apparently, seemingly for sale. After my complaint, I didn't see any significant changes over the course of the next few months. And honestly, because of that, I thought to myself, gosh, I might be, I, I must be the only one concerned about this. So needless to say, I was quite shocked to learn that I wasn't in fact alone in my concerns and that many complaints have been filed with the town. and that many complaints have been filed with the town dating back to the middle of twenty twenty-two. I learned that others had voiced the same concerns I had by writing to the town, going to town offices in person, emailing town officials, detailing all the violations, yet still no action. It's my understanding that back in November of twenty twenty-two, the town issued a formal response to a complaint that had been filed stating that they had informally addressed the business and that they would eliminate the violations going forward. Yet still in March, when I filed my complaint, nothing appeared to have been done and the violations continued to get progressively worse rather than better. I also find it surprising that the town seems to feel it's our responsibility as residents to document these violations and continue to file complaints despite the fact that nothing seems to happen when we do. I don't feel like that's my job and it's pretty mind-boggling to me that I would be personally responsible for monitoring a business. Um, you know, without oversight and enforcement, the situation has continued to deteriorate. And at least for me, it culminated during the weekend of June seventeenth, which was just eleven days ago. Not only I was the one who referenced the fact that there were twenty-four vehicles at one point on that lot, which I have photographic evidence of. I also believe that seventeen of those, from my observation, were for sale or in transition. As, you know, we seem to be splitting hairs as to what is considered for sale and what's not. Um, but that weekend was also the weekend that they began utilizing residential property across the street as an overflow parking area for additional unregistered cars. Again, it appears that the tenant continues to increase the scope and nature of violations because of the lack of oversight over the course of the last eighteen months, both by the town and the owners of the property. And so for these reasons, it seems wrong that we're even discussing an application to increase the number of vehicles. I mean, the current owner and tenant, quite frankly, don't seem to care what the limitations are, nor feels it's their responsibility to abide by the rules and regulations. Um, and also I found it quite shocking that, um, it was stated that uh car transporters do not pull off and block um any traffic because just as recently as last week, there was a car transporter that pulled off on Woodland Road, blocking a butter's driveways and they cannot pull into the property because of the temporary makeshift cones and um chains that have been put up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Um, any any response from the from the elders regarding Ms. Vaughn's?
Dave, David, maybe, maybe we should let all of the
Yeah, okay.
all of the, all of the resident or the neighbors and people in attendance speak and then
Let's do that.
the applicant can make a final statement addressing what's necessary.
I have one more. Or I have two more, actually, sorry.
Laura, a quick question, are we supposed to be able to see the uh people? I just don't know if it's just
No, their video doesn't show up, it's just um giving them permission to talk.
I just wasn't sure, so I wanted to ask.
Sure. There we go.
I don't know what, I don't know what to do, sorry. Shh, shh, wait.
We can hear you.
Good evening. If you could just introduce yourself, uh, name and address, please?
Uh, is it me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I'm Claudia Margaret. I live on two oh two Woodland Road for the last forty-seven years. And I uh wanna agree for everything that my neighbor Laura said, I agree for her. And I make the same kind of complaint. And then I saw on the map before, there was supposed, there's supposed to be three parking space just before the stop sign facing Woodland Road, but there also packed four or five cars instead of just three cars. Today is the only day, there's only packed one, but there's also four or five on the three parking space. I live right across and it's very annoying that when they put the headlights on, they come right to my living room and sometimes they leave the car running in the winter time to warm it up or whatever they do. It's very annoying. And I think if they have eight parking spaces, that's, it's okay. But because they have an eight and they have a maybe, there are twenty cars in there and more than twenty. And they usually they park even on the front of the garage where not supposed to be a parking space. I see they car, they, they car parked right in the front where the, where's the gas pipe they used to be. There's no parking space over there. So that, that, that's what I wanted to say to your neighbor. And then if we, I have my neighbor that she wants us to speak because she doesn't know how do so, so she can speak now for me, for her too.
Hi, I'm Linda Sloan. I live behind the gas station. Um, I'm, my concerns is the over-parking of all the uh cars and uh my driveway has turned into a turnaround. We live at a very dangerous intersection cutting off of, onto Woodland Road. The tractor trailers uh block our driveway. I have uh pictures on my phone of tractor trailers uh behind, blocking our, my driveway to unload cars. Um, they have chains up. We have children that play in our driveway and I'm afraid that when these cars come down the road to turn around because they wanna pull in the gas station. I mean, the I Z N D, they cannot because the, the chains are there and if a child gets hit in our driveway, it's, it's gonna be devastating. And they're, they're putting their cones and chains up to protect themselves from getting cars in there. Well, they should have some consideration for us out back also. And all the, the ten, eleven o'clock at night hours that they're open and the headlights from the tractor trail, the trailers delivering the cars, it's very annoying. And cars are always moving out of there late at night, not at business hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Linda, um, I didn't catch your, your last name and your address.
Um, Linda, Linda Sloan.
And the address?
Two hundred Woodland Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have plenty of pictures on my phone. Twenty-one cars in their parking lot, um, tractor trailers, everything. Headlights uh in, in the, in, in all the times and dates. And, and it's what a coincidence, the only day since they've opened up, they have eight cars in the parking lot for the first time.
I was gonna say that, like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have another one, Laura?
Yes. Um, Ms. Falcone.
Hi, my name is Nancy Falcone. I'm a resident of two fifty-seven Cordville Road. My family has lived in this home since the late nineteen sixties, so we have witnessed many, many changes of hea- change of hands, if you will, on the business across the street. Back to the days when my brothers as teenagers actually pumped gas there. So I'm very, very familiar with every single change that has come on here. And my first point that I would like to make is the Z B A back in the nineteen eighties had very good reason for what they did. I realize you can't put the horse back in the barn and you're re- really probably going to go ahead with eight vehicles, but they had good reason then. And the population of Southborough and the surrounding towns were a lot lower back in the eighties. The roadways out here, the traffic has become so much worse over the years. Every year it gets worse. So I won't rehash everything you've been saying as far as the uh the cones and everything else. My biggest concern is that there is not going to be deliveries allowed on these roads, whether it's Woodland Road or Route eighty-five. That is the most unsafe thing I have ever witnessed. The other thing is the car deliveries should be done during the designated business hours. I have witnessed it and I have taken pictures of car haulers arriving there at one and two AM in the morning. The last one that I just sent the end of June to the town and made a complaint to for the Z B A, brought, sent you videos of, that was at, after six PM. It was, I believe, six forty-five PM. They're supposed to close at six PM. They were wide open doing business and taking cars off that hauler and really near misses. That video clip was sent to the Z B A. I don't know who of you took the time to watch it, but you have it. I have all my emails and let me tell you, the first complaint I ever filed wasn't with the Z B A, but it was with the Board of Selectment. That was Sunday, February sixth. I believe they signed their license on February second. That very first weekend, before they even opened for business, they had flashing, flashing lights in the windows, which was against the rules. The building commissioner or inspector at that time took care of that and that was settled and that was fine with me. I do have a list of other emails and concerns that I have sent. Many of my concerns and complaints, I could mirror what the previous resident Laura has already said, so I'm not going to rehash that, you've heard it, but I certainly have loads of documentation and photos and videos. If anyone from the Z B A would like to look at those, I've sent them to the office. Laura Davis is well aware of this. Um, if you have any questions for me, let me know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm, I don't know if I can speak to the whole board, but there was, there was a lot. Laura did a very good job making sure we were all aware of the videos and the pictures. I looked at all of them. I, I, I would bet most of the board looked at everything, so we, we're, I think we're pretty well aware of it, but we do appreciate the uh, the inputs.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anybody else, uh, Laura?
Um, Ms. Vaughn has her hand up again.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, so I just had one kind of final question regarding all of this. Um, so I know we've talked about having let the horse out of the barn already on with regard to the select board approving licenses for the last eight years for eight vehicles. Um, what I'm specifically interested in understanding that if we are considering approving this application, which essentially would go against every other historical decision made by the Z B A about this site. Um, I, I'd really like to know what has changed from those decisions, where it cited that any addition to non-conformance would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and would deviate from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw for residential um District B. And I'm also interested in hearing about what enforcement actions will be taken if this is approved to ensure the violations don't continue and are addressed in a timely manner. I mean, I think all of us as abutters have been waiting eighteen months for some action to be taken by the town to eliminate the violations that are happening on a daily basis over here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, the, I mean, the, the enforcement agent is, in fact, uh, the building commissioner and I think noise ordinances would be the, the Southborough uh Police, um, I don't know, I, I, I'm pretty sure that's, that's how enforcement would be. Um, certainly the
I'm just asking if that would actually happen, seeing how over the last eighteen months, nothing has been addressed. So many people have voiced concerns since last November and no enforcement actions have been taken. The town sent a response saying that they would and then they did nothing.
Okay, yeah, I, 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 I'm not doubting or questioning any of that. The Z B A is not the enforcement ag- agent that, again, the building commissioner is. I would, I, I would say that the concerns that are raised here should certainly, wi- will certainly be raised to the, the, the building commissioner to say, um, because I think it's very legitimate um concern. I have that same concern saying, well, yeah, you can set conditions and say, you're not gonna exceed these things. But if there's a history of not following them, it makes it pretty hard to say, well, this time we believe you. Um, so all that, I think, really weighs, to me, weighs into what the Z B A will ultimately decide uh regarding this application. Um, but it, we, we've kind of been in this position before where I, I think that's the concern of, of a resident, well, who's enforcing this? And, and all we can really do is the Z B A is to say that, that that's the zoning officer who needs to enforce that.
So I guess to my other point, um, I am interested in understanding the um thought behind what now today would make this less detrimental to our neighborhood and why it would no longer deviate from the zoning bylaws of Residential B.
I mean, I, my, my response is that's part of what the decision will be.
Yeah, and I guess I'm interested under what conditions are being considered to make that decision. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, at least from the town bylaws, there are certain conditions that need to be taken into account before these decisions are made.
Right, right. Well, I mean, typically, eh, when we, that, that's the discussions the board has regarding what conditions we think we would, we would want to impose in the decision. Uh, I think we've heard a number of things pretty clearly. Um, you know, the, the, the auto transport needs, needs to be, you know, in the lot, not on one of the abutting roads. Uh, there's a concern with, with business hours. I, I think we probably wanna make something pretty clear there. Um, and then um that the max number of cars allowed on the lot. Uh, those are, and, and again, this is, this is just me, this that we, we have five board members, uh, six here with, with, with Jamie joining as an alternate. Um, that's a discussion you would have, but those are, this, these are the things I, I'm hearing from uh you folks as abutters. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, I, I do have a question for um the abutters on whether fencing along Woodland Road would be seen as beneficial or not really an issue for you?
Yep, as far as I'm concerned, um, uh, having an opaque fence there where we couldn't see what was happening um, and we didn't have to look at a parking lot filled with more vehicles than should be there in the first place would probably alleviate some of the complaints that are um happening based upon what's going on there. I think we would also like to see the conditions of the twenty fifteen site plan, which showed landscaping, which showed nice ornamental trees and really cleaning up the site to make it look uh nicer to a residential neighborhood would also be, you know, quite a, quite a change from the pictures that were provided in, in the Z B A packet.
Totally understand and, and based on what Laura shared with us in the approved site plan, some of that ornamental landscaping wasn't part of the approved site plan, but um Laura, Laura.
Especially from what I could see with the approved site plan, um, it does still show a lot of
It does still show some, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just saying not quite to the extent, totally understand. Um, be interested in hearing from other, other abutters along Woodland and even Cordville Road as to their thoughts on additional fencing and, and screening that they would uh like to see to you know, accommodate the ongoing use of this business.
Right, or, or what conditions they find most important.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you, Laura. Um, here is Ms. Falcone.
Hi. Um, I don't really know, you, you know, possibly on the long, the back of Woodland Road, that's a nice idea, but you can only go so far there, maybe as far as the, the edge of the building because you do anything further down to the point, you are gonna block.
Sightlines. Totally understand.
In trying to get out onto eighty-five. Um, I mean, that is, has always been a nasty spot to pull out onto Route eighty-five and, you know, it's block that, there shouldn't be anything down there. And I believe one of these site plans even said, no cars except, uh, the uh, originally there was a, uh, handicap spot, I believe, on that side and no other cars were suppo- supposed to be on that side. So that has to be looked into because that may be the most current site plan. Um, off the top of my head right now, I don't know that. As far as any fencing along eighty-five, that would just defeat the purpose of having the haulers brought in off the road to do their deliveries. So I don't foresee that, you know, a chain link fence or anything like that wouldn't appeal to me. I'd rather have it open space and have the cars limited to what they're legally allowed to have in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all right on that regard.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else raising their hand, Laura?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you're on.
Laura, you're on.
Um, I, I don't agree with Linda Sloan. I don't agree with the fence because it will make our driveway a bigger turnaround for the cars that um, coming off of eighty-five and we have grandchildren that play in the yard and in the driveway.
Sorry, can, can I just ask, uh, Nancy, uh, for, for clarity, your, so your, your lot, your house is directly behind where the fence is now, sort of the, the wide end of the triangle, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm on Woodland Road, yes.
You're on Woodland, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. So you're, yeah, you're a direct abutter.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and cars turn around constantly in our driveway because they have chains and no trespassing in cones there now. Uh, I mean, what car dealership do you see that has cones and chain blocking their entrance and, and exits to get in to go look at cars for sale? You don't see that anywhere, but here.
Could I, could I ask a, a suggestion? What, what do you think is a remedy for the cars that turn around in your driveway? Because I do sympathize with that.
What, what, you mean how many cars turn around in my driveway?
Well, no, no. What could be done to make that better? What sort of condition or what sort of thing could we do to discourage that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Probably if they take those chains down and all those cones for no trespass, then the people that are coming to buy cars there will not turn around in my driveway and park behind their building because they cannot get into their parking lot because of those chains.
I can see that.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that, okay. I mean, it, yeah, if, if, that, that's, I mean, that, that to me is a pretty big concern. So if you have a suggestion, I think we should certainly listen to that.
Like have a single point of entry on Cordova Road.
Well, I, I hear you, I hear you there, um, Linda, but I'm wondering if people by chance turn up Woodland and realize they can't enter, where are they going to go?
That's true, yeah. Well, if they, if they open up both ends, then they can cut in like they always did for years. I've been here thirty-five years and never had this problem of cars, of cars, the traffic coming in the driveway.
And, and they, and they previously ha- had access from Woodland?
They have access to get, not now, they don't because they have chains.
No, 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 I'm, I'm clarifying previously.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So, so the concept of maybe a fence to shield the view, but an opening so that they can still get in from Woodland Road so they don't have to use adjacent driveways to turn around.
Um, is, is, is the fact that those chains are up and I see those cones, is that, is that a fire safety hazard issue?
Fire trucks will just run right over those.
I mean, I, I just have never seen anything quite like that.
Yeah.
You know?
I, yeah, I've never seen it at any car dealership anywhere.
I'm, I'm curious what, from the owners, why they have it set up like that. I don't know if now's the time to discuss that or after we close.
Yeah, I, I, well, I don't know if we, if we're, we're kind of set with you, but as if I don't know if there's anybody else has a, has a hand raised regarding that. We, we basically asked about conditions. Is there anybody else, Laura?
No, that was it with the butters. Um, the only hand raised now, um, the current tenants.
If I, if I may, I just, that, that question, I, I touched on it earlier, but there was a, there was a real issue with the cut through, a public safety issue that came up that people were cutting through and, and turning, instead of going to the end of the triangle and taking a turn to the right, they were just cutting through somewhat of a high speed as cars were coming down eighty-five heading north. And it, it was recommended at some point to, to, to stop that. I think it was raised either by a neighbor or, or, uh, someone from the town may have raised it on a public safety issue. And that, that was the reasoning, but I, I, I can let Laura tell us what that was, because there was a reason to do that. It wasn't just to be inconvenient or to cause people other headaches. Can you speak to that, Laura?
Yes. So, um, I was approached by, I believe the fire department or a police officer, um, stating, you know, the turnarounds, and I have also expressed my, my concerns. There were, you know, they were cut through all the time in high speed. We had, you know, clients walking in the parking lot viewing, um, vehicles and we had, you know, just people with the blind spot just cut right through. Um, a lot of them were commercial trucks. Um, during the snow, it would be plows, it would be salt trucks, you know, sitting there. Um, so we decided that for our safety, not only for us, but for also our clients, we would kind of block that. Um, we blocked it with cones and we blocked it with chains because it's easily removable, um, so it would not be a hazard. Now, the only thing that I would say regarding, um, the houses in the back on Woodland is they are turning in your parking lot because they cannot cut through anymore because we had blocked that, um, for our safety and for also the safety of our clients. So what they're doing is because they can't cut through and they're like, okay, well, let me just make a quick U-turn and go right back. Um, so that is, that is an issue and that's why you're, you might also be seeing headlights, um, you know, constantly. We also have, you know, it's, it's a, it's a sticky, um, intersection, so you're not only getting headlights from one side, you're also getting headlights from the other side. So we also, you know, we also have to make that aware.
Can, can they, can they, if the chains were to come down, can it be designed so it's not such an easy U-turn? Does the plot plan allow for a more of a entry with a zigzag and an entrance? So it, only the customers would be tempted to come in? I don't know if that would solve the turnaround, you know, to
I think we'd certainly look at that. Um, one thing would be the transport cars, uh, haulers, because I think that is probably one of the biggest issues I've, I've heard, I've seen that, um, is, and that would have to park in that way. I understand that they park in that, in that, uh, entrance way that keeps them off the road, um, and, and looking at that, we're certainly open to look at that. I mean, the site was approved for nineteen spots, there's one handicap. I think that, and that was done after a lot of contemplation. We understand in the landscape, I'm going to talk to the owner about that. Um, I, just, just by way, when, when that was finished, uh, about a year and a half after, the operator, brother of the owner passed away and there was like this downtime and, um, of what to do. And now that we have, uh, really, we, we think it's very good tenant, we can address that and get it done. And we apologize for that delay, because I think that's important.
Hey Laura, can you pull up the approved site plan again? So what I'm wondering is if there can be some configuration where there is no longer an egress on ingress, egress onto Woodland. If the parking can be reconfigured to stop that, because it looks like we have a long aisle along Cordova for transports to enter from the south and exit to the north and drop things off, which would be off-road. Um, you know, head in parking somewhere along this line, some reconfiguration of the parking along here, you know, along the Woodland side that maintains the nineteen parking spaces. I'm not sure if it's possible, totally, totally get that. But eliminates this concept of a pass-through between Cordova and Woodland. So what I would love to see is the applicant come back with a revised site plan that maintains the nineteen parking spaces or as close to it as possible, eliminates that egress onto Woodland, so that maybe that entire site can be fenced and maintains the parking count.
But when was this, when was the site plan review done, Laura? What, what is this a result of?
I think two thousand fifteen or something like that.
Yes, I think it was, um, August fourth, two thousand fifteen. I want to say was when the decision was, was done.
So, yeah. I think we've, I think we've lived with the two thousand fifteen site plan and still have numerous issues from the abutters.
Yeah.
So I think the idea here is let's continue what we're talking about from the applicant's side on a, a renewal of their license based on a revised site plan that maintains approximately nineteen parking spaces, but eliminates that egress onto Woodland, so that there's never a question for anybody visiting the site that they should be able to access it from there. And maintains that long arc of ingress, egress along Cordova Road from south to north for transports.
Yeah. Pro- procedurally, how does that usually work, Greg? That, I mean, I know for other applications, we, we go from here to site plan review. Is that just a request to the planning board?
I think we can request that from the applicant in order to approve their application subject to final site plan approval.
We, you know,
You have a question?
We had done something similar with the, with the plow site, um, traffic study, right? Then the traffic engineer returned with the plan. Greg, we, we have done that, yeah.
Um, yeah, I have, I have I guess I have a few questions or comments. Um, I, I'm actually mostly concerned about that abutter who makes sense, says now she has all these turnarounds in her driveway, which she never had before this part was blocked off. So, and I do think, I, I, me personally, I, I would prioritize that as this is a exception to the residential area. Um, and I think we need to think of how these changes are impacting the residents and that's, that's a big safety one. I also understand there was a safety issue for the tenants regarding this ingress and egress. I guess my question is, will a fence there solve the problem? Or not? And if we do the fence, there was also the, the complaint, and I think it's valid, of making, turning on to eighty-five and having blockage there.
Which, which, which to me, it, I, 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 I actually like Greg's suggestion because it, you start looking for a more professional review to say, well, how do you solve the problem of cars turning around in that next lot, but not create a problem where cars are just blasting through the, the, the parking lot. Uh, the, the two seem to be in conflict here and, you know, maybe that is something that could help resolve that as a, as a, as a site plan review for how that can be addressed.
Yeah, and I, and I think the fencing can stop at like the edge of the building, so to speak. So that the fencing doesn't continue on to create a, a side impediment for the intersection itself, but shields the residents of any activity going on in terms of the moving and placement of cars for sale. So it's kind of a, it's not a site, it's not a fence along the entire Woodland Road.
Right, right.
Length, it's, it's more of a limited fence up to a point to shield the activity, but not block the sightline.
Right, right, because that, that's exactly the problem. If we, we start saying you've got to do this and that and we start violating what a, you know, a surveyor or somebody who's a professional doing this, then we're getting ourselves into trouble. Any other, any, any other thoughts from the, from the, from the other members on, on that suggestion?
Um, I suggested a zigzag, um, you know, I, um, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a designer, I'm not an engineer. But once you put, once you put a fence up, you can't back the car out. It's that, so someone professionally, I think, to say enough, just to look at it um, and come back with a solution.
Well, well, let, let me, let me ask Mr. Mr. McCullough and, and, and Yara, is that something you would consider? Because we can't, you know, we don't, we're not really empowered to say we're going to continue. We need you to make that request. Um, I think if I'm, if I'm feeling this correctly, I think the board is feeling like there are definitely concerns from the butters. And maybe there are some structural things about that lot itself that have us bound in a little bit to make sure we're not killing your business, but at the same time, not endangering or, or worsening the lives of the butters.
Um, yeah. I, I, what I can, um, say is I, I looked at the site plan a little more and, and I'm going back to the landscape in a bit where it looks like it narrowed the driveway a little, and I'm trying to recall, uh, Peter Beemis did that site plan. He's a local and, and I haven't, I haven't spoken with him pre- to, before COVID, I, I could certainly get back in touch with him, but maybe it, it looks like it's pinched on the plan a little bit more than it might be at the site. And I would just want to ask if there's any kind of public safety issue of why, of why he may have left that open. I, I, I don't know. I would check that. I'm not sure.
So I've, I would love to hear, I mean, I, I would be open to continuing this with a love to hear options on the site plan that addresses the concerns of an ingress, egress along Woodland that do not impact public safety. Is my view on it.
Yep.
Because it seems like the, you know, the main, like, the way the site plan lands now, it seems like there's a nice corridor for transport drop-offs along Cordova Road that are off-road. Um, so the question is, what can be done to eliminate the ingress, egress off of Woodland to address the Woodland and butters' issues? And, and create more, and to the butters that are still here and listening, it will not address the issues of people going down that side and thinking they can get in immediately. It will have to happen over time before they realize that's not an option, but over time it will. Um, but long-term, address that issue of, you know, people coming down Woodland to get into the site versus coming off Cordova, which is really the idea of a commercial site.
Right.
That's, that was a primary, uh, entrance. I mean, it seems like, and I got to try to, uh, reconcile, there was a bit of a conflict. One, one neighbor wanted it off, cut, got walled off and, and closed and, and it sounded like Ms. Sloan wanted it open because of the use how it always was. So that's why I was suggesting maybe the, the pinch there would, would slow the traffic down. But again, I, I'm not the, uh,
Well, we're dealing with the, with the issues that the current tenant has with emergency vehicles, snowplows and other people coming through their lot, which is a danger to them.
Yeah.
And the frustration of a butters of people turning around because it's been chained off to avoid that issue.
Right.
Realizing they can't enter off of Woodland Road. So if we make one permanent, you know, then yeah, there's going to be a transition time and no one's going to be happy with it. I get that. But long-term, it might address everybody's issues.
Good. And, but there's probably a way to put a sign up, uh, warning them before they make the turn, no entry off. I mean, there's ways to solve it.
Right.
It might be something that they put on the website is you are only able to enter our facility via Cordova Road along with the overall changes.
So, so I think we could probably spitball ideas for another, another forty-five minutes for not careful. I think probably the wise thing to do is, is to follow your suggestion if, uh, assuming the applicants are, are willing to go along with that. I don't know what's a, what's a proper level of a continuation to come back with a site plan that would address the concerns that we, that have been expressed here.
David, really quick, I have, um, an abutter who is raising their hand. I don't know if you're allowing more public comment. David, really quick, I have um, and a butter who is raising their hand. I don't know if you're allowing more public comment.
I I I actually, I'd like to hear. Can I make a motion to close the public section?
I I think, Mike, if we're gonna make a motion to close the public hearing, we have to hear the last person has their hand raised.
Okay, and I but but I I would like to just first hear back from the applicants regarding the suggestion for continuation first.
I I always uh find in working with the board, it's 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 better to come to a solution if it takes a little time. I I think that's the best method. Um. It happened when we did the site plan. So I think, uh, yes, that would a continuance. Um, it it doesn't seem like it would be wise to get it done right now at tonight on a vote, and I think it would be better to come back with a. Addressing the concerns of the neighbors. So if we could have that time.
So, um, Mike, you made a motion to close the public hearing. I will second that amending that we.
No, we can't.
We we you.
Can't close the public hearing.
No, I don't want to close the public hearing.
Sorry, because we're gonna come back, never mind.
Right, so we want a motion to continue it.
Totally got that, never mind, my fault. Thank you. So we should hear Ms. Falcone. Since she has her hand raised.
Hi, thank you. Um, we're spending a lot of time talking about this two thousand sixteen site plan. So if we're going to do that, I think you need to look at the conditions that were set on the two thousand and fifteen used car dealer's license. And with that, um, there are items on there that I did mention earlier about those uh. Three designated spaces at the end of the point there, those were to be left. Open eliminated as it says in this. So that the entire lot can be utilized without the need to traverse under Route eighty-five. Whatever that point was, I don't know at the time.
Okay.
That's still something to look at. Um, the dumpster is another thing. Um, that's supposed to be ten feet from the building. That's never been like that. That those dumpsters over there have always been right up against the building. But anyway, with all this, all of this looks nice on paper. But when you actually have the vehicles in this side, this triangle, this hasn't gotten bigger over the years. It's the same small piece of land. Um, I'm going to suggest maybe the ZBA members themselves have the owners, the. Tenants invite you down when they have their eight cars back along the fence. You put your cars in these designated spots that are shown on this map. And you see how difficult it is to maneuver in that tiny little lot. And then come back to the meeting with an approved site plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so you're 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 open to a continuation. What what's a reasonable amount of time for to to continue the the hearing?
I I'd have to consult with the client and get in touch with the a site person. I I don't know what the relationship is with that now. I don't know if there's a. Is it August here?
Sorry to cut you off. Um, Laura, when's our next meeting?
Not till August.
We're not having one in July.
Correct, it's not until uh, yes.
Okay, should we just continue to August?
Third week in August.
Third week in August is.
Sixteenth.
I I I have a question. Does that mean we're not dealing with the butters concerns now about all the extra cars there, which we did see pictures of? I mean, we can fill through the packet.
I I I think that that's that's an enforcement action, that that's a follow up with Casey i- in my view. Um. So I know, I don't think we should ignore them, but again, he's the enforcement officer. We need to inform everything. I'm sure Laura's right here. I'm sure he's gonna know everything that's been discussed tonight. But is that is that logical just to continue it to August? So then. We'll see what you have then. Maybe if you're really not prepared, you can come to the meeting and say, we're not ready yet. We'll continue it for another month.
So how many licenses do the tenants have right now? Because the ZBA never really approved date. It was only a two.
Yeah, Jamie, I'm I'm on the same page with you.
Yeah.
I I my view, my view is that, you know, without a decision and it's pending, it is status quo as to what they think they were licensed for to begin with. So as far as what they think they were licensed for, they think they were licensed for eight based on the select board. And we're not voting to make a decision to change that tonight. We're continuing the hearing to make a final decision.
Yeah, I don't I don't think we can, I don't think we can change the numbers now. We're not gonna make a decision.
Can we ask Liz what her thought is?
So the current approval from ZBA is for two cars only.
Right, yeah.
It doesn't matter what the um license from the select board says, because it is a zoning and it's a zoning violation. That's continuing until. The number of cars that are on the site are approved or until there is a higher number approved, so. Until a decision is rendered, they really should only have two cars on the site.
So Liz, I have a question for you. Can we make a motion? Here as the zoning board to abide by the select board's decision until we make a decision on the application in front of us?
No, because.
Require an enforcement on the decision?
So it's at the discretion of the zoning enforcement officer, so. Although it's outstanding, um, knowing that this hearing has been continued and that there's. A matter pending regarding the issue, I I think it's per perfectly reasonable to. Hold off on enforcement until a decision is rendered. However, it is at his discretion.
Okay.
Yeah, Craig, I don't think we can, we can't make a decision without closing the public hearing.
So so I'm I'm more wondering if we should make a decision not to enforce.
So.
We can't, we can't.
I don't think we can do that.
The process would, the process would be that um if he did enforce, it would be appealed to your board. So you would still.
All right.
Liz, can can we make a decision? I thought we made something similar, but it's probably technically different. We can make a decision on the number of um. Cars that can be sold on the lot with an approved site plan or no?
So you could make a decision tonight about the number of cars, but if you are, it doesn't really make sense be. To do that right now, because until you have a site plan in front of you that you're comfortable with, if it goes to a site plan review and they approve it. Or they don't approve it and then it comes back, um, you might just be going back and forth and it it could be a waste of everyone's time.
I think Liz has said it correctly in that. Any appeal to somewhere between two and eight cars will come to us as an appeal. At which point we will probably table it until we decide the case in front of us.
Right.
Like the the operators are. From my interpretation, free to continue operating as they have been. Knowing that there have been complaints and should be super careful. About how they're doing it, but you know, any additional complaints and things from the building inspector and enforcement officer. They'll come to us and we'll know that we have something in front of us that we're trying to resolve this anyway.
I see.
Yeah, no, correct Liz?
Yeah, so you are the ultimate authority on the enforcement once it comes to you, but it would have to be enforced by the building. Um, commissioner or the zoning enforcement officer first, and then it would come to you for a final decision.
David, you had mentioned this earlier in the meeting and I've listened to the three very concerned butters and. Trying to get it resolved and trying to balance it with the business needs. And I've heard the complaints. Um, but it's just a restate or we're not the enforcement, I you know. Um, but we can get a better deserve better conditions, but the enforcement sits with those other.
Yeah.
Those areas of town. So when I hear it's the town, I feel like we're all the town.
Well, we are all the town, yes.
We are all the town, so we're the town, you're the town, and we want, you know, I really want the best.
And and the select board is a town.
Yeah, this is where all the town. I am doing something. I am doing something. I'm here.
Right, but I I think getting to the best solution sometimes means you're not getting to that decision tonight. And that might not be comfortable for some people, but I think. More time for better solutions, better than we got it done quickly and now we're living with some disaster.
Yeah, so I'm trying to weigh that with the complaints. I really feel the heat of the complaints, but um, you know, and. The continuance is gonna give us the the better result.
Yeah.
I think so too.
I I do agree with that. I would like to say to the tenants that, you know, I hope this has brought to light. Some of the issues with the butters and I'm sure you guys want to be good neighbors. Um, and. Just, you know, I just want to have that thought put out there.
Right, it would make it easier if you actually are complying with all the conditions that have been laid out before you and and addressing concerns that were stated tonight. So, okay, so. Do we have, um, do we need to have a motion to continue?
I I move that we continue this to our August, Laura, you said sixteenth?
Sixteen, yeah.
Do we have anything on the agenda currently?
Um, I just received an application today, so there will be.
Are we able to put this at the seven PM slot slot and tell everybody else?
Wait, wait, so we're making a motion to continue? We're not making a motion to close the public hearing?
No, because since we continue, the public hearing will continue to the next meeting.
Right, right. We don't want to close it yet, Mike.
Yeah. Can we put it in the seven PM slot or do we need to select it elsewhere?
I would recommend that we not do it at seven o'clock, because this is not something that would be. Quick, and if someone's already been submitted an application and been given a time first, probably shouldn't move it. I don't know if it's been posted yet, but I'm guessing this will not be a quick matter, so. I would, I would assume that if the other matter that is already signed up is quicker or more or less.
Well, we have to pick a time certain for the.
I I would I would say seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, okay. That's her. That okay with you, John?
Yes, that's that's fine. I I and I did want to reiterate the fact that that voicing and and understanding the. Concerns of both the board and the neighbors and and having the operators here, listening to that, um, I think that goes a long way on understanding.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, what happens in in the Cordville section there and making it a better place for everyone. So and we'll keep that in mind.
Okay, so.
That takes five.
Thank you. Do do did we do we get a motion?
I I I move that we continue this to August sixteenth at seven fifteen PM. God, that's a lot of teams.
I'll I'll second that.
All right, motion, motion to continue until August sixteenth has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Williams, aye. And Jamie?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you again in August.
Thank you. Enjoy your Fourth of July.
Thank you as well. Liz, thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Okay. Oh, gosh, so. Um. We have approval of meeting minutes, May seventeenth. And I'm gonna. I'm not gonna lie, I hadn't spent a lot of time on this, but.
I'm gonna assume they're good.
Laura.
She's usually great, so I'm gonna assume she's continuing to be great.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So we had eight Winter Street, so that was the one with the. Uh, the deck around the front door where the whole thing is violating the setback.
All good.
It was all, that was, everybody was happy with that. Uh, special permit, what was that on? Oh, this, that was the school. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, there was a lot of conversation there, obviously. Um. Anybody have any any concerns or?
I pulled up.
Does it's really detailed, Laura.
I was not present, so I have nothing to say or or vote on.
I mean, my my quick look through it again is um, it looks like it's pretty well captured. Make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
Oh, let me just.
I'm looking at the at the at the motion.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty accurate.
Did we get all the conditions of them not being able to go beyond?
Yeah, but like you made it, you made the motion with the the condition be limited to one session per day with no more than nine students. That was the condition.
Okay.
We also stated in there, the app to the applicants, there'll be a site plan review with the planning board. And you encourage the butters to attend the planning board review to voice any concerns they still have, so that.
Alright, yeah.
That's pretty accurate.
Yep. Like I said, Laura, that's a great job.
A second? Is that a second, Craig? Okay, okay. All right, motion to approve the meeting minutes uh from May has been made and seconded. All in favor. Respond with aye against nay. Uh, Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Uh, Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Paul, you weren't there, so.
I'll sustain.
Okay.
Excellent.
Sustained, yes, very good. Um, all right, so the only other thing you had on the agenda is we have a meeting not. Not in July, but in August. Uh, just nature of the application you received, Laura, any idea?
Um, it's a special permit for a um conversion from a single family home to a two family home.
Okay, we've we've seen those before.
We've seen those before.
Any news on the forty B?
Nothing.
Yep.
Which one? There's like three now.
Yeah.
Maybe three.
You guys are gonna be busy at the end of the year.
How much of your life do you want to dedicate to affordable housing?
How many people have their terms coming up?
Yeah, you were reading my mind. At least one. Who who is it? Who's up now? Is that you, Craig, or no?
It's not me.
I don't think so. I think I have a couple, I have a few more years.
Please be me, please be me.
Exactly, yeah. It's the definition of insanity.
All right, so hold on, let me let me look.
Should we look for a second alternate? Should we need a second alternate?
We would, it would be great.
It would be nice. It would be nice.
Get somebody, get somebody.
Alright, so we have. Mike Robbins coming up in June of twenty twenty-four.
Oh, yes, your buddy, you're up.
You're up on Friday, so you can renew or not, Jamie. You're you're on a one year commitment. So come Friday, you can.
You're still an alternate.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm 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 good to commit to being alternate. I already recused myself from the uh, the Park Central.
Right.
But but the other one I wouldn't have to, so.
So we got, we got Mike in twenty twenty-four. Paul in twenty twenty-five. Myself in twenty-six and David and Doris in twenty-seven.
Oh, dear God.
Twenty-seven.
Everybody start buying Mike drinks.
Yes. Just makes you wanna move.
There we go. That's our, that's our plan.
Laura, you have a question or?
No, I was just gonna say just a quick reminder at the meeting in August, you guys need to vote on chair because it'll be the first meeting after the June.
Oh.
Chair and clerk. Very.
I'd like to nominate Dave again.
You people think about who should be the chair. It's a lifetime appointment.
Yeah.
No, we just swapped it back and forth, Greg and David.
I mean, I mean, David, the the thing we agreed on is you don't have to serve as chair in your last year on your term. So you've got a couple more years before you get to call that.
You just made that up. I'm pretty sure about that.
No, I actually, that was an Andrew Dannington thing. He's like, and his last term, he's like, I'm not gonna be chair my last year of my term.
Okay, all right.
And then I I chose it as well and.
And and yet here you are.
You went on.
Yeah.
Laura, 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 on the next meeting, not tonight, if we could put on the agenda, I just wanted to. Update the board on ADUs a little bit. Okay, not tonight, because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, you got it.
No way.
So so we have two things pending for the August meeting. Do you want to do it then or do you think maybe the September meeting?
How about the September meeting? Because there's some feedback, um, there's some feedback. Yeah, I just a small update, nothing. Nothing really complex, because somehow I volunteered.
Going for September and one of them or for August and one of them's lengthy.
One of them, one of them's probably gonna be long, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you know, something I don't know clearly.
Well, no.
They're continuing.
We just continue.
So I don't think. I don't think.
Got it, got it. Kick the can to September, no problem.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's okay, just.
Paul, are you up? Okay, Paul.
Is, is it my time to shine?
It is.
As long as your video holds out.
Lighting, get the lighting, he's got the lighting.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mike, seconds.
Motion has been made to adjourn the meeting and seconded all. In favor, we respond with aye against nay. Craig?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Double I for Mike.
Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Really good work.
Great to see everyone.
And see everyone. See you.
Have a great night.
We did a good night.
Happy Fourth of July. Happy Fourth of July, everybody.
Hasta luego.
Okay, bye bye.
Alright, bye.